And we will start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, welcome, everybody. We'll start out the meeting with our usual comments from the audience. Do we have any audience members who would like to make commentary and remind? I have been in the past unable to see raised hands, so if somebody wants to just go ahead.
I'd love to make comments, per usual.
For purposes of the record, if you can state your name and address before speaking, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure, Dr. Marissa Hauser, 150 Bolton Center Road, Bolton, Connecticut. Am I free to speak now? Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you for giving me the time to speak. I'm sorry I missed the last meeting. I heard it was very eventful. So obviously, I'm here to say unmask our kids. I'm asking that we have some judgment calls and kind of look at the guidelines that are coming down as guidelines and recommendations, and not something we should continue to do to our children. They should be able to be kids. They are not affected by this virus. So again, I'm asking our kids. I know there's a lot of you that have had COVID or that are scared of COVID, but unfortunately, this virus is not going away, and I feel like we are doing a disservice to our kids by continuing to mask them and keep all these ridiculous requirements in the way. So again, I plead with you to unmask our kids, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment?
I'm happy to start off the comments with respect to the pro masking arguments. I do have a younger child in Bolton Center School who is not able to be vaccinated yet.
Nicole, can you do me a favor?
I'm sorry, you're right. 69 Nicole Sullivan, 69 High Ridge Farm Lane. Apologies, I should know better. But yes, I am very much for keeping masks in place, at least until the time when all children have the ability or eligible to get a vaccine. So that is my request. It makes me feel safer for my child. And while I know that it is most likely that any infection that my child would get would be mild, I still don't really want to take that risk or make that decision for other people's children. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to make any public comments?
Hi, I'm Jessica Perkins. I'd like to say something. Sorry.
Go ahead, please. Name and address.
Hi, my name is Jessica Perkins. I'm at 15 Lorwood. And I'm here to speak in behalf of supporting, keeping our children, teachers, and staff masked while in school. We finally have a school year where we can send our kids every day to school, which is, and I never thought would be a novelty, and we can all go to work each day without disruption. If we allow any of the people in the building to be unmasked, we risk continued spread of COVID, which will set us further back in our recovery from this pandemic. The dreaded results will likely be an increased number of cases, which will, according to the CDC data, will be primarily in unvaccinated people, which are the majority of our elementary school and middle school children. The CDC just released data saying that 75% of new cases are unvaccinated. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we had someone else also.
My name is Christina Moore. I'm at 18 Bolton Center Road. Just after looking at what's been happening in Seaborn, which is right next door, I think it definitely kind of shows right now why we still need to play it safe. As I understand, I know it's hard for our kids, but you know, unfortunately, they are going to use it, and we just need to keep our staff and our students safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else? There's a couple of names out there, maybe.
Hi, this is Pauline Bevins. I would like to say something.
Thank you. State your address, please, for the record.
Sure, 65 High Ridge Farm Lane, Bolton, Connecticut. Sorry, you probably know I live in Bolton. But wow, I would just like to reiterate with the, what the last three ladies just said. I just feel as though I have a child in a younger grade that's not able to be vaccinated at this time, and I just feel for the safety of the staff and for the other children and for the family members that we're not out of the woods right now with this pandemic. And I feel as though that it would set us back if we were to allow kids to be unmasked at this time. So I would like to adhere to the CDC guidelines and follow the state recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to make a comment? Going once. Going twice. Thank you, everybody, for your participation. Moving along, we are on to routine business. Actually, I'm sorry, are there any additions to the agenda this evening?
None this evening.
Thank you. On to routine business. Do we, I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the August 19th, 2021 Regular Board of Education Business Meeting.
So moved. This is Chris.
Do we have a second?
Second, this is Ann.
Thank you, Chris and Ann. Is there anyone who has any comments, questions, or corrections to these minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion.
Hi.
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 As opposed, will abstain. Passes on to Board of Education Committee Reports, Finance Committee.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so at this point in the year, we are 5% expended and--
Sal, excuse me for, Ann, I'm sorry, for one second. Joe, could we allow Kasal to share?
I thought I had. Let me double check. Yep, she should be able to share, no problem.
Kasal, can you, or no? Okay. Sorry, Ann, thank you.
Sure, yeah, so we're 5% expended at this point in the school year, and I believe we're going to go through transfers and approve those.
Correct. So this is the June transfer list. Just for everyone's notice, the first one is the purchase of a two-camera system for our transportation fleet. We had a single camera system. We were having some failing cameras. We needed to wait to be sure that we were going to solidify our contract with M&amp;J for the next five years, which we did. So we were able to move some things around in transportation to ensure the proper best practice for a minimum of two cameras per bus. So that is what you see there. The next one, we needed to purchase 200 Chromebook charges, so we had some technology ins and outs, reclassification there. Some additional money needed for the Clean Harbors Hazardous Waste Disposal that needed to be done at the end of the school year. Some additional monies in family and consumer science for BJ food supplies for end of the year, cooking for students. And then a transfer to Edge Seer Recovery Course for students. And then, lastly, the Connecticut Invention Convention fee. Any questions?
So these were from June's budget.
Correct.
So it's last year's budget.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Yes, correct, last year's budget. We don't have any transfers for the board to examine our or motion to approve this evening because we got a budget so late. So whatever transfers you'll be seeing that we need to do will be done in September. Because pretty much we weren't spending money for the most part until, unless it was urgent over the summer until the budget was set and monies were able to be encumbered at that point. Okay, so now, Kasal, if we could go to the end of the year, 2020-2021 report. And as you can see, in regular education, we were 85% expended, but I want to speak to that a little bit because you see $44,000 sitting in instructional technology. The board may recall that last March, you made a transfer from benefits of $50,000 for us to purchase Chromebooks that were greatly needed, that we were having trouble, as you may recall, getting all year long. And we had done that to make sure that we could get them in the hopes that we would be able to use our Esser monies for that purchase. We were, in fact, able to use the Esser monies for that purchase. So in the end, we were able to return those monies as we had discussed last year. So then, and we also had some savings in athletics from various supply lines, and a lot of that really, quite frankly, had to do with COVID. And then Student Support Services. While we were short in special education itself, we were not short overall in the full special education budget. We can go to the next page. And you'll see there that, you know, we ended up in the positive, which was good because that continues to be an ever-changing landscape, although we did receive less monies for excess costs than had been projected. And then, we had a total of 104,236 returned in Administration and Support Services. A bulk of this was savings from paper and printing. You may recall last year that I had shared we were holding off on a new contract with our printers just because of COVID and what was going on, and we knew that we would have savings with that. We did have to get new printers, so towards the end of the year. So at this point, you know, we won't see savings like that this year for that reason, because we had to go into an agreement for the printers. And then we also had savings from, from paper usage as well. And then we also had some savings in operations, primarily from energy use and fuel savings. As well, as a reminder, you know, we were remote on Wednesdays, and some fuel savings in other areas. And then the last page, you know, the large portion of the return is salaries and benefits, which we had discussed at length last year, and that is completely driven by the unfilled positions that we had throughout the course of last year. I mean, I think there was one point where we had 11 unfilled positions, and it varied from month to month, sometimes, quite frankly, week to week. So we had a large savings there. So in total, we had a total education budget savings of $967,965. And again, most of that driven by salaries and benefits on the field positions. The board committed $275,000 towards this year's budget last March, and again, in April, an additional $200,000. So the unaudited number to be returning to the town to go towards next year's budget is $492,965. Any questions for me on that?
Do we need to take a vote to approve the June transfers?
You do, yes, please.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the June transfers as shown on the budget report.
Thank you.
Second, this is Ann.
Thank you, Chris and Ann. Is there anyone who has any more questions or comments about the June transfers? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed or abstaining? Okay, the transfers pass. Any more questions about this year-end unaudited report? We don't have anything else for Finance Committee, right? I mean, 5% was what we said that was expended this year.
Correct, this year. So we can go to the end and show that right there. I mean, currently, we're projecting 100% expenditure. It's a little early in the year to project anything else.
Yep. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kasal, and Joe.
Move back to routine business and on to the Bolton High School Student Representative Reports.
Last week was the first week of school, and it went very smoothly. It's a really big relief for all of us not having to carry around the shields.
Hey, Em, it's really hard to hear you.
Um, can you hear me now?
A little bit better.
Yeah, just closer to your mic.
Should I start over?
Yes, please.
All right. Last week was the first week of school, and it went very smoothly. It was a really big relief for all of us to not have to carry around shields anymore. And false words started about two weeks ago. The cross-country team is looking forward to their first meet, which is an invitational on Saturday against Trenton Brook in Simsbury. And volleyball practices also started, and their first home game is against Rockville, and it's happening right now. And their first non-league game is away tomorrow at Cheney RVT in Manchester.
Thank you, Emily.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Mike.
Okay. Back on August 26, we held a Bigs and Littles activity with this year's freshman class. The Bigs gave tours to the freshmen around the school, and then they were organized into their homerooms. They participated in a writing activity on what characteristics make a person successful, and afterwards had a cookout, thanks to Mr. Mazzelli. Only a handful of students were not able to attend, and this year's freshmen seemed to be adjusting well to high school. And in terms of sports, the boys' and girls' soccer have both won their most recent scrimmages, and the boys' soccer is currently scheduled to play against Wyndham, and the girls' is currently scheduled to play against Winter Lock.
Thanks, Mike. Emily and Mike, you guys are free to stay, but if you have homework and things to do, by all means, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're moving on now to Community Meeting Reports. Do we have any of those?
I can report that the Bolton Scholarship Fund has started its meetings for the year. We will hold our annual meeting on the first Wednesday of October. We did move our regular meeting night from the third Wednesday to the first Wednesday to accommodate some schedule changes in some of the members, and that's it.
Anyone else? Any other meetings exist? I am not hearing any, so I will turn things over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent of Schools Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So I'd like to start out by thanking our administrators, our teachers, and our staff who worked so incredibly hard to ensure the safe and happy return of our students to school. Our staff, quite frankly, is absolutely amazing, and they are very hardworking and dedicated people, and we are very blessed to have them. And we had a very successful start to the school year in spite of the monsoon rains. We made it through just fine. We kicked off our first day back for staff on Monday, August 30th, with convocation, and the theme was the importance of gratitude, empathy, kindness, and hope, which translate to our work with each other and our students. These key attributes allow us to embrace our innate ability to support each other and every single one of our students as we navigate this rocky road together through shared priorities and our common humanity. I urge staff in my opening remarks to continue to support each other as we work to help every child discover their dreams, develop grit and determination in working through challenges, and build upon their strengths to achieve their goals. Our students need our compassion, our care, and our expertise now more than ever to help them to dream and to grow. I would like to take this opportunity to welcome our new Bolton High School English teacher, Caitlin Moriarty, to the Bolton Public Schools. I'd also like to share with the board that I communicated with parents today regarding the shortage of bus drivers across the state of Connecticut. We have been very fortunate over the course of this past year and a half in Bolton through our transportation company, M&amp;J, to hire and retain quality bus drivers. In addition, M&amp;J has been stepping up its campaign to recruit drivers. Currently, there are a variety of factors that continue to play a role in the hiring of new drivers, including a backlog of individuals waiting for background checks, training, and licensure as part of the process through the state of Connecticut. Districts across the state continue to make Governor Lamont's office aware of this significant issue. I also made parents aware that it is entirely possible that we may have a morning or afternoon bus runs, as well as sporting event runs that may need to be canceled if we do not have enough drivers. Should a transportation cancellation need to occur due to a lack of a bus driver, either Mr. Mazzelli, or Mr. Giard, or myself will communicate via school messenger to the affected families as soon as the district is made aware. I sent this out today. We haven't had an issue yet, but it is occurring all over the state, and I wanted to make sure that parents are aware of the issue and that I may, in fact, have to ask them for help in transporting their kids to and from school. I recognize full-heartedly that this can be a tremendous burden for parents and families, but I wanted to share this information today so that they could begin to strategize contingency plans should they need that. Any questions for me? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to turn it over to Director Goldsnyder for a report on extended school year program last summer. Great. Good evening, everybody. So we had a very successful ESY program this year. We had 31 students who participated in the program. The focus, while the focus was on reading and math, there were other areas, as identified in each student's individual education program as well. In addition to the focus on reading and math, students also received their related services, as outlined in their IEPs, things such as occupational therapy, speech therapy, counseling, social skills groups, things like that. So we had, we were fully staffed. We had a level of excitement that I think we haven't had before with kids and staff, and it was, it was a very, very good program. Really happy with how well it went. Thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Beth? All right, hearing none. Mr. Giard, I'm turning it over to you, sir.
Good evening, everyone. First item here is the Summer Learning Program, also a great success. The Summer Learning Program ran from July 5th to July 29th for a total of 12 days, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays from 8:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at Bolton High School. And I didn't have this on my notes, but a quick thank you, I'm just thinking of it now, to Mr. Mazzelli and the staff at the high school for working quickly with us to get the rooms assigned and the furniture brought over to that school. We had 61 students enrolled in the program from grades one through eight. The average daily attendance was 82%, and the majority of students made their way in each day on one of the three bus runs that we had running. We had a total of nine staff members, along with Wendy Begani, who was the summer school coordinator. And I have to really say that they worked extremely hard in a fairly quick turnaround time to put the program together. So a quick thank you to all of them. The program, which was paid for with ARP Esser and Esser 2 funds, covered literacy and math content, and also included STEM, craft, and outdoor activities. Students enjoyed the last half hour of the day, which included activities such as making slime, which is a fan favorite, tie-dying shirts, painting kindness rocks, Olympic challenges, Bubble Day, kickball game challenge, and making of crafts. So it was important to make it engaging and fun, and I have to admit, I participated in some of those activities. I couldn't resist. Students completed a Google Form survey at the start and the end of each program, of the program, highlighting their goals for success, and the data was positive in that manner. And on the very last day, students received a gift bag with a book, bubbles, and a certificate. So we crammed a lot into those 12 days, but I would have to say that it was a success overall. Opening of school, as Superintendent Heck mentioned, was a success. The teachers had a very productive first two days on August 30th and 31st. Students then returned on Wednesday, September 1st, with a lot of excitement. It was great to be back and rolling in on the buses. We worked hard to communicate with families about the opening of school, specifically arrival and dismissal procedures, health and safety information, and many other updated procedures. Families have been very receptive, and for the most part, everything has gone smoothly. Mr. Bocciromovic and the custodians, every year, they just shocked me, did an amazing job with getting the building ready, which includes the floors, the classrooms, and the outside grounds. We're all in tremendous shape to welcome students and staff back. Upcoming events, so it never ends. We're always planning what's the next thing that we can get the school community involved in. We have two big events coming up. First is the Bolton 300 mural project, which has been on delay for quite a bit of period of time now. And that's going to kick off on September 27th, and every single student safely is going to participate in the art project, which will span over two weeks. And I'm going to have another update at this meeting about that, and probably a video that's going to go along and show the process of that project. So that's very exciting that we're going to be able to do that. And then we have the BCS Walkathon, which is going to take place at the end of October. And actually, we're going to walk outside on the grounds on November 5th or 4th, weather contingent with a rain date of November 5th. We had to skip that last year, so that's a great PTA-sponsored event that we're excited to have. The staff and students are excited for these events, and overall, I have to say that it's been a positive opening to school, and we're excited for the year ahead.
Thank you. Any questions for Daryl? Chris?
Thank you. Since, well, has any thought been given to allowing or making provision for students who were in eighth grade last year but are now at the high school, who otherwise would have been able to participate in the mural project to do so? Since they would have been at the school during the 300th anniversary.
We have not put thought into that, to be honest with you. So that could be something that we could talk through. Logistically, there's been a lot of hurdles so far, but we're seeing success, but that would be another piece that we could definitely look at and see if it's possible. But it has not been thought of, so it's not part of the original plan, but definitely a good thought.
All right, hearing no other questions. Mr. Mazzelli, on to you, sir.
Um, thank you, everybody. So over the summer, we were happy to welcome the BCS Summer Program to Bolton High School, and at the same time, we focused our own summer program in four specific areas. First, we identified students who would benefit from some targeted math instruction. Secondly, we invited rising seniors to jumpstart their capstone work, and this allowed us to begin shifting the starting point of capstone towards the end of the junior year as part of our restructuring. We also offered some credit recovery for some students who struggled during the challenging times of the pandemic. And finally, we had our grade-nine teachers focus on creating a whole new kickoff and transition program for our newest learners. We're really excited about what we call Team 25, and I will be sharing some more information about that at a future meeting, perhaps October. Superintendent Heck, I believe that's correct. So, you know, we, just as Mr. Giard said, we were ready to start the year, and I was really grateful for all the work of all those teachers over the summer, the amazing work of the custodians, the guidance team, Dean Christine Johnson, and everyone who worked tirelessly to get ready to welcome students. But another group from the BHS community I want to thank are the multiple groups of students that helped us select new teachers to the Bolton High School faculty. You know that we had several new faces this year at the high school, and what I want you to know now is that part of the really careful hiring process that Director Goldsnyder has put in place includes, almost without exception, even in the summer, even in a pandemic, the involvement of students watching mini lessons from prospective teachers. And we continue to be amazed at their insightful feedback, don't we, Mrs. Malinowski? Right, we had some really great moments with those two. We actually had three groups of kids in over the summer for those hirings. The, the last piece I want to talk about is a huge-- The, the last piece I want to talk about is a huge thank you, and I can't tell you who I'm thanking. So we, as I think you're aware, had a very substantial donation that made a real big impact on the exterior look at the high school. And I think you might recall from last year that the sign down at the Bolton Board of Education end was replaced, as was the, the street sign for the high school. But what you may not know is this, that used to live up on the facade of the gym since the opening of school. And you may have noticed at the end of the year, there were some letters missing because they were in my office. There were actually three different styles of letters that had been patchworked over the years. And you can't, this picture doesn't necessarily do it justice. But that alum approached me near the end of last year and said, you know, everything is looking great with the signage for the high school, except those letters. I want to do that too. And it was very rewarding that the afternoon prior to that August twenty-six kickoff date for Team Twenty-Five that Michael mentioned, this was installed. So the very first activity we did with Team Twenty-Five was to talk about tradition and talk about the power of alumni support. And we actually took a quick field trip down and took a look at those letters.
Any question? Thank you. And any questions for Jill? Thank you. All right, thanks. Hearing none. Director Malinowski has an assessment report for you all.
Good evening. I apologize if you see me looking off to the side. I have two screens and I just want to make sure I have everything I need available to me. So last week, the State Department released last year some of the assessment data for SBACK, which is our English and math for grades three through eight. The Next Generation Science NGSS for grades five, eight and eleven, and the eleventh grade SAT in English and math. So when scores are released, it is also our obligation to also report on these publicly. So this evening, I'm here to do my annual report, which we missed last year. And as always, I remind us that Bolton is a small district and every student's score is weighted more heavily than if we were a large district, you know, as we love. In so many ways, we get to have this individual time, but every student really counts. Additionally, the scores reported tonight are the results of assessments administered during a pandemic. I can't say that we have had that in our history. So it's important to remember what last year was, even though we'd like to forget a little bit. So due to the pandemic, there were wide variations on, in how different groups of students learned last year, both in Bolton and across the state. The data presented this evening for Bolton is representing the results of our hybrid learning model. We do not have public information for our other models because our sample sizes were too, are too small. And then that data would become identifiable. So all of the numbers you see this evening are a result of our, most of our time of learning was considered the hybrid model. While most of our students participated in this model, you will also recall last year, we regularly reported on the numbers of students whose parents and guardians chose to keep their children at home for various reasons, for them to learn remotely, either for part or all of the school year. This also had a significant impact in many ways, as we've heard for state results, but also in Bolton. And it really won't be until we take an individual look for each student, one at a time, note, looking at all the data that we keep in mind. So with all of this information, a same student cohort across district comparisons, comparisons as we've done in past times is not valid nor advisable. Our hybrid model was not the same as other hybrid models. So it's very important to know, even if you do look at that data, which is public, that it really is not comparing the same, same, anything the same in that regard. We are also encouraged by the State Department to look at this year as a fresh start. It's data. It's a starting point. We will, of course, take our time and look back at other information we have, but we get to move forward from here. So some other general statements. In general, in English Language Arts, students in seventh, eighth grade lost the least ground academically when we're looking at that data at first glance. In all the grades for English Language Arts, Bolton's average scores are equal to or higher than state average scores. In math, students in grades three and eight lost the least ground academically. And while Bolton's average math scores were mostly higher than the state scores, academic impact appears to be greater in mathematics. That's true across the state. Every report I've read, math was the hardest hit. Here is our data. In the first column, we have the grades and then all grades together. The middle column represents the student data in Connecticut. And then the yellow column is Bolton's data. Our math, same grade Connecticut and Bolton. And then for our SAT results, it's just the one grade. So SAT ELA is Connecticut and Bolton. And then math, Connecticut and Bolton. Next Generation Science, the NGSS assessment occurs in grades five, eight and eleven. In general, our statements are that the students in grade eleven lost the least ground academically. In all the grades, the average NGSS scores are higher than the state average scores. And as we heard repeatedly last year, the hands-on learning experiences in all grades were significantly modified or eliminated during the pandemic. And I state this here, while this is not assessment data, we heard that consistently throughout the year. So when looking at our data next, it's important to keep that in mind. And these are our results. I can't help myself, but I have to really celebrate the eleventh grade. I also want to remind anybody who may not have been at the board or families who may be listening in this evening that the Next Generation Science standards is a relatively new rollout. It is a completely new curriculum. And this test is a very new and very challenging test. So to be in a hybrid model, which I've already stated has been challenging, to see eleventh grade results scoring there, it's a highlight. For our next steps, we've already started. You've heard quite a bit from Mr. Giard and Mr. Misselli and Mrs. Goldsnyder, because it really is about connecting with kids. We spent a lot of time last year talking about that, who, which students are engaged? How do we bring them in? We are not forgetting that. That is our number one focus this year. We are starting the year with that. Superintendent Heck reminded us of her message within her convocation, and that is how we're starting our year. We need everybody here and ready to participate. So our focus is on relationships and school connections, number one. Then we need to dive in and examine our scores individually in relationship to the other data, as I had referenced earlier. Which students were out for the various reasons? How did they test? What else do we know? And then also compare it to previous data where we have that. Excuse me, I need to scroll just a little bit. We are going to be examining our content trends by grade level as well, looking at grade level plans for how we can meet our students where they are, so we can accelerate and or remediate as needed. An example of things that we're already doing would be we're at the center school where they have the win time, the what I need now time. You know, the teachers are already looking at how they can look at that more effectively, that, that conversation has already happened. And we are well on our way at beginning to recognize how we can support students in every way possible. And then another step moving forward, we learned a tremendous amount last year about how to deliver instruction in different ways. This is our year we need to evaluate what digital resources really helped. Certainly, science was able to overcome some of the challenges of the hands-on, to be able to, to allow students to learn some content. So find the, the resources that have been most helpful and see how we can use them even more effectively as we move forward and get to see our students as often as possible every day in school.
Thank you, Sarah.
Are there any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a question. So first, you mentioned in the slide that you were just showing that you are, or the teachers are taking a grade level approach to meeting students where they are. What does that mean for like an individual student who maybe had some struggles?
Certainly. So every child will receive a report. We're just getting all that information now. And teachers will look at that in comparison to what we already know. So we have their data from last year. We have any test scores that they had taken. We have their academic record in front of them. We have information about their engagement last year. We met weekly about students and who, where they were. So we have that data to look at. We actually have more data than we've ever had on students. So we'll take a look at that. So say it's a fourth grade student that we have highlighted, we may have some concerns about, certainly referring back to third grade teachers, examining what was there. And we've already started in terms of curriculum. The conversations happened last year and will continue this year about what standards maybe were covered more effectively in person versus online. And so it's not a, again, this will not be like other years. So we are again fortunate being small. This is where every count, being able to count every student and know them is really at our advantage. So hopefully that answers your question, Ann.
Yeah, absolutely. And I completely agree with you. I love the, you know, private school atmosphere of our public school. So I just have one other question and it regards the scores that you gave. And I know that, you know, these are not the be all and end all. And I know that they only come from the hybrid part of the year. But I just wanted to find out if you had any, you know, high level ideas for why some grades were seemingly so far below other grades? You know, why was like eighth grade so much higher than sixth grade?
You know, we, we've had some very cursory conversations about that. It's really hard to do that, you know, so I even went back this evening in preparation for this evening. Our largest group of kids was, were sixty students, pretty much, and less than that necessarily took the test. So almost everyone, you know, when you think about that, it's two percent per kid when you're looking at a hundred. So to give us a percentage on so few students, it's, it, for us as, I know, I say it every year and I appreciate that Scott a few, few meetings ago reminded us of the smallness. It, it doesn't paint a complete picture for the educators, for the families, for the public. We really need to, so, you know, we have to dive in, obviously, where the scores have that variance. But it could be a matter of only a handful of kids that made that difference. And why that is, we can't say until we, we look at that one by one.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Just one quick addition to just base, as basic as this, like every year, usually it's the third graders who are taking it for the first time. Well, those are third and fourth graders because the fourth graders didn't take it two years ago. So there's some substantial big things like that that are going to have ripple effects just for this year and moving forward.
Chris?
Thank you, Sarah. Can you clarify what the data actually represents? I know you said that the data was shown was based on kids who were in the hybrid model. But I was confused about whether that meant kids who were only ever in the hybrid model for the whole year? So if a child started out remote and then went to hybrid, was their data included or was it excluded?
Nope. So, so it would be any child. So again, I don't know if we reported much about how much attendance data was reported each week to the state of Connecticut. We had multiple admin assistants doing extra work and great thank you to them that they are heroes behind the scenes. So every child's attendance data was analyzed. And so if seventy-five percent or more of your time was in a certain, certain model, so be it fully remote or mostly remote, be it fully present or mostly present or hybrid, you would fall in one of those buckets. Now, we have some students, and I'm going to gloss over this very broadly, because once I talk about small pockets of kids, it becomes identifiable and that. We don't do that. But we did have some students, and you heard that very early on last school year, where we pulled them in as much as possible. So we had some kids that actually had most of their time able to be in school most of the time. And we also had some students that, for the various reasons that we talked about earlier, families chose to keep them home for the most of the year. So our numbers, so while we may say there were sixty kids in the class, the hybrid data might be fifty-four or fifty-two. And so when the state, the state has made all this data public and they have the counts actually in there and you'll see a variation in those counts. So I don't know if that helps.
So I'm going to add to that too, Sarah, if I could please, for Chris as well. So the other piece of that, Chris, is right, our middle school was hybrid until, I forget, February or March, right? Isn't that right? But our elementary was back in, with the exception of Wednesdays, we were fully remote on Wednesdays all of last year in October. So, but Bolton High School is considered one school in the state reporting. It's not aggregated out by our middle school. So like, for example, in the community where I live, there's a middle school separate from the elementary schools. So that is another factor that played into how our data was aggregated in terms of the fact that it was, that we are in the hybrid listing. And our data with regards to fully in was suppressed because of the smaller numbers. So all of that played into that reporting that Sarah was talking about, that we had to do every week and every month, that went into how they aggregated this data.
Has there been any comment from the state on what they plan to, or how they plan to use this data in coming years? I mean, are they going to try to compare it with future years' test scores or is it just going to be thrown out after the year?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I serve as co-chair of the Assessment and Accountability Committee for superintendents in the state of Connecticut. And Ajit Kapala Christian, the chief performance officer for the state, also sits on that committee with us. So we have a lot of conversations. And again, we're using this as sort of like ground zero. The comparison is going to be difficult because of the learning models that were experienced last year. And they're, you know, right all over the place, as we even see in small Bolton, but certainly across the state. So again, you know, you've heard us say this before, this is one marker in time, one piece of data. And so I'm certain that we will be using it in some frame of reference. How the state in the end is going to choose to do that, to some degree, may be largely driven by what actually happens this school year. You know, like you heard, I think Christina Moratou brought it up, you know, or one of the parents did about, you know, Hebron's already had to close an elementary school for a week, right? And it's the second week of school due to a COVID surge of numbers. So I think time is going to tell on that, and I don't know that we're a hundred percent certain where that's going to go.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you very much. I don't believe that we have any unfinished business this evening. So that brings us to new business and resignations. Kristen, you're on mute.
Thank you. We received resignation from Bolton High School English teacher Natalie Miken, and her last day will be tomorrow. And as I shared earlier, we have hired a new high school English teacher who started yesterday. And I want to thank her for her service and wish her well in her future endeavors. That's all I have for that.
Thank you very much. We're on to policies. We have a first read of two policies this evening. One is regarding health screenings and the other is, what was it? What was it?
So the health screening is in reference to changes made, legislation changes that were made. This is a regulation, not a policy. So I didn't know if that was something that the board wanted to approve this evening. You certainly could do that because they're in effect, whether quite frankly you approve it or not, because it's legislated. But it would be great if you did approve it.
On yours, from my readings, it looked like it just was a removal of delays regarding the inability to get regular health screenings due to COVID. Is there anything else really? I mean, there's a couple of words here and there. That about sums that one up, correct?
And the grades, the language to solidify when the grades are that it has to happen so that it's clear based on statutory language.
I would be fine with moving forward with this one this evening. Everyone else is. The other one is in regards or graduation requirements. What were the major changes there?
So I wonder if we could take the the first one first and then we can speak to the graduation requirements one, if that would be okay?
I'll make a movement. Yeah, sorry, Andrew. I'll make a movement to approve the changes to to the administrative regulation R 5141 regarding health assessment screenings and oral health assessments.
Second. Chris and Ben? Or was it Scott?
It was Ben.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments about this administrative regulation? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Or abstaining? Okay, moving on to policy 6146, graduation.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate it. So back in 2015, the board revised graduation requirements. At that time, we were ahead of the game in Bolton in terms of graduation requirements. Since then, there have been a number of legislative changes that have occurred. And this revised policy represents those changes. I provided the model policy from Shipman to Principal Misselli and Director Malinowski. They worked with the leadership team at the high school and Ms. Johnson to review all of the elements to be sure that we were capturing exactly what happens and is happening and will continue to happen at Bolton High School with regards to graduation requirements and in the elements that are required by law at this point. So there's two parts to this policy. There's for classes graduating 2018 to 2022, which we already had in place before, but we've codified it here because we still have a class that's going to graduate this year under those requirements. We then have for those graduating 2023 after. We currently have 25 credits as a required number of credits for graduation. That is the statutory requirement for 2023 and beyond. We were already there. We moved there back in 2015 because there was a movement to go there. And I think at the time, Mr. Misselli, correct me if I'm wrong, but we might have been at like 24 credits at that point in time, correct? Right? So and that was really the addition of capstone, I do believe, at that point in time, correct? Yes. So it's broken out now into humanities, science, technology, engineering and math, physical education and wellness, health and safety, world languages, senior capstone and electives. Further, it talks about how high school credit can also be granted in a variety of flexible and multiple pathways, which is required by the legislation, including cross-curricular graduation requirements, career and technical education, virtual learning, work-based learning, service learning, dual enrollment in early college, internships and student-designed independent studies. Then it moves on to a section that describes the demonstration of proficiency in basic skills. And it's broken out by literacy, basic skill standards and how students demonstrate achievement in that area in mathematics, in science and other Bolton High School requirements, which include a passing score for all Bolton High School transferable skills for graduation, community service of 50 hours, college career portfolio, including jobs shadowing experience and a Bolton High School health portfolio. Further, students have an opportunity to demonstrate proficiency in basic skills by also achieving satisfactory results on standardized testing such as AP tests, portfolio review, teacher review committee of students' body of work or any other assessment method determined by the Board of Administration. It also reviews information about students receiving special education and that that is specified in their goals and objectives of their IEPs. Certificates and diplomas are identified there, withdrawn credits due to poor attendance as well as graduation during a period of expulsion. And that highlights the proposed new graduation policy for Bolton Public Schools. Chris or did I miss anything? I mean, Chris or Sue, sorry.
No, yeah, that was very thorough explanation. Thank you. The one thing that I had noted when I was reviewing it this evening is that it the policy still contains several bracketed notes, which I don't believe are meant to be in the finalized policy, so we'll need to take those out.
Yeah, correct. That is correct. I left them there for the board to see why those pieces were there. But you're correct, those will be in next month's packet eliminated.
Great.
So also have any questions or comments about the graduation requirements?
Yeah, just are there any major deviations in this newer model?
Deviations from what?
Graduation requirements. You know, it's listing out credits. I didn't go through and like enumerate, you know.
From where we stand now? Is that what? Okay, so not really. What the way Sarah and I kind of described it, we're working with our team is it's a little bit of a rebranding that actually creates a little bit more flexibility and gives us the opportunity to meet kids kind of where they're at. And it leaves in all the good stuff that we already had. As superintendent mentioned, capstone was in there way ahead of the curve. Some of the transferable skills stuff, the the community service stuff, all that kind of good Bolton stuff that's already been in there. So in terms of deploying the new graduation credits, it's really going to offer when when the school council is reviewing the student profile to make sure they've met them. It's actually going to be a little easier because it'll be a little flexibility scheduling that senior to make sure they've met them. So it's really more of a reorganizing than anything else.
Thank you.
Ms. Tech and Mr. Misselli, I just, I'm sorry, I don't have that policy right in front of me. I just went up at one draft. We also had personal finance added to that. Is that in this policy as well?
I believe it is. Yes.
So I do want to highlight that is a change because that is something we had been working to bring forward to make personal finance part of part of our policy because this will now allow us to apply to be a candidate for a grant that we had looked at pre-pandemic time. That's not a good reason to have something in a policy. However, having personal finance in in our policy is at this time a great idea for all all students. So I did want to, that is a piece.
Definitely. And that's a great highlight that I overlooked and I apologize for that. And while we certainly will be able to apply for federal monies potentially, every student should have personal finance. Let me start with that, and that is what Sarah said, but I want to reemphasize that.
And that's an example of something, a direction we were already heading. We were already kind of guiding most of our students there before policy. The other thing is you take a careful read of it. That that policy is kind of like the minimum. Our guidance team is very clear that depending on your post-high school plans, there's other recommendations that come from guidance. You know, the college bound versus the work bound. I'll use a world language as a really concrete example. The policy has is kept with the one-year requirement, which mimics the state. However, we always tell students, you're applying to college, you should be taking two or three years. And there's enough, you know, there's eight periods in a day. So even if a kid does seven, and many of our children do eight, but seven over four years is 28. So there there's there's extra room in there to exceed the 25.
Thank you both. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any future business?
Not at this time.
All right. Then we will be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
That was Ann, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm head down writing, sorry.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments about the motion?
We're all so excited about the start of the school year. Nobody wants to leave the call.
There it is. I like it.
It's been remarkably short meetings, I will say. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone against or abstaining? All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone.